All right, so at this time I'd like to, it's five o'clock, I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. All members on the board, did you receive a copy and have an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting? And if so, do you have any comments, changes, edits?
I read them, they look good to me.
Okay.
Look good to me as well.
Okay, if there are no comments, could someone make a motion and second to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
That was Robert just.
Bob, okay.
And can we have a second, please?
A second.
Okay, Justin seconded. All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Yes. Paul, this is Dave, you, as an alternate, do you want me to stay on or?
Yes, we do.
Yes, Dave, you need to stay on.
Very good, thank you.
So the, the minutes are approved from the last meeting.
And I will just quickly say, the reason why we need Dave is because we only have four members, we had one resignation, John Veronica has moved out of the city, so he resigned. There's a vacancy, the mayor is considering applications at this point, but was not able to get someone appointed before this meeting. And we had two absences tonight, so that's why we're down to four.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mark. So at this point, you know, we have a roll call, I think, Mark, you mentioned all the members that are on the call. Would you be able to review the agenda, Mark, or Daphne, I think Mark, because Daphne's on the call? If you could review the agenda for this evening, please?
Oh, sure. So what's before you tonight is a variance request, a public hearing regarding fifty-three, zero, two, Carnation Way, a request for variances from our city's fence regulations. And the specific issue is they have a perimeter fence that is located in the side of rear yard may not exceed a height of six feet, they'd like to go above that. And then also a fence in the front yard is supposed to be decorative only. And they are proposing a solid fence that is, is a little bit taller. And that is the reason for the variance requests, they have a statement in your packet. The location here is at Carnation Way, which is a new street connecting with the old Orchids by the Acres, Redtail Pass. It's a lot on the corner here with Highway Q. And the applicant is present, Mr. Joseph Rollat.
Hello.
Thank you, Mark. So everybody on the call, what we're going to do, so we read the agenda, then pretty soon we'll call the, the public hearing to order. So first we'll go through, we'll have the applicant state their case and what they're asking for and the reason for their variance. There'll be some questions and answers, and then if there's other individuals on the call that wish to speak in favor or against this variance request, you will also have an opportunity to provide your opinion and weigh in on the variance. Are there any questions? At this point, at five oh three, we'd like to call the public hearing to order. Mark had read the first agenda item. So before we have the applicant speak on behalf of this, Mark, are there any reports or city staff concerns or site visits that were prepared for this variance?
Yes, I went out and visited the site, these are actually photos that I, I think I took all these, yeah, I took all these photos. So what happened is the applicant actually put up the fence. I think they weren't aware of the, the permitting requirement for the city. And we worked with the applicant to make sure that the fence was not located in the county right of way, which was an issue initially. They will, Joe, Joseph will speak to his variance request, but we have been trying to work with him to bring his fence into compliance with the city fence regulations, the zoning ordinance, fence regulations. And as part of that, I advised that he needed to receive two variances, as I described earlier in the, prior to the hearing. That's all I have, and I haven't received any correspondence, other than I know that the homeowners association, Bill Rangatt, who's present on the call, has been involved in this as well, and I presume will be, well, is available, you know, Bill Rangatt's on the call, so I'm not going to speak for the homeowners association. But the, the city enforces the zoning ordinance as it relates to our one single family, and that's what's before you tonight is the variance request for from an R-one zoning regulations for the city.
Okay, thank you, Mark, and then any, in addition to that, you know, the city has its requirements for fences, then anything, any deed restrictions the homeowners association would have is something that is, you know, not in our purview to review, correct?
The city does not enforce private covenants.
Okay. Thank you, so with that, Joseph, I believe you're on the call, could you please state your name, and then you may proceed through and explain your variance to us?
Yes, my name is Joseph Rollat. The reason for the variance, the reason even for the fence, the main reason is safety, it's a house that is right next to the highway. It's also on a corner, people, there's a lot of residents, and there's also a business at the end of the street, including a house that's for sale. And so we have headlights in our, we have no mature trees. Nothing to block the wind, nothing to block anything really. So we needed a fence, the variance specifically is because our house is in a ditch. Under, I don't want to say underground, but it's below the level of the highway. Anywhere between four feet, four and a half feet to foot. And because of that, you have to, when you build a fence, to match up with the house, to give you privacy, to even block sound, because of the construction trucks that drive by, semi trucks that drive by, and just the everyday traffic. It's picked up ten, fifteen times of what it used to, I used to live on Shorecrest up the street. And it's, it's loud, the trucks are extremely loud, the fence could help with that, it could help with a potential, I mean, winter's here, it's already snowing. Also for safety for our kids and for our pets. I think we just want fair treatment, because every house always go all the way up to, you know, past Shorecrest, all the way to Quick Trip, has a fence, they have mature trees. We have nothing to block our house, to protect our house. School kids also, also, I've just seen people bike and walk to, from probably school, from Quick Trip, whatever, bus stop. They walk up and down, there's no protection, blocking our house, so anybody can, anybody can realistically just come right on my property. So that's my main reason. Speeders, again, that's another thing. We have head cops outside our house on the Carnation Way, so obviously speeding is a problem. I just, I just want to protect my property, and we actually tried to sell our house because we wanted to move to Alaska, and we couldn't, one of the reasons that we couldn't was because there was no protection from the highway. So that's my reasons.
Committee members, do you have any questions for Joseph or Mark?
I do, kind of reading through the, the packet, it looks like the fences, and I'm unclear about the certified survey that was provided, it shows the fence being constructed outside of the property, and I, I read something in the packet about that, and is the idea here that it's going to be moved back and reconstructed on the property? But at a taller height and closed more than fifty percent?
Close more than fifty percent, yes, in the front, and it will be higher than six foot. Because of the, I guess, the dip that our house is in, we need to make up for that variance, it used to be on that hill. That's where I thought our property line was, because the grass, when it was, when the sodding, because when we looked at the house, it was labeled as a twenty-nine hundred square foot house, our realtor, who was in contact with the developer, said that you know, when, when the grass was planted, that our property line went past the, I guess you could say the electrical wall. So when I built the fence, I built it what, from what I thought was our property line, I found that out, was not. I moved the fence. I had somebody come out, and they looked at the property line, and they moved, I moved the fence from the hill to where my supposable property line is, which actually matches up with the retaining rock wall before the electrical wall. And I, I just want to be able to, I guess, have a six-foot fence, but I want to be able to have a six-foot fence where the hill was, where I thought my property line was. Because I have to go down, I just wanted to add a few feet to make up for that, because I don't want to plant soil and everything, just to go up a few feet, I was just going to raise the fence.
So.
If I may interject quickly, Joseph, Bob, to answer your question, when contacted by the city, Mr. Rollat moved the fence onto his property.
That's where the pictures we were looking at here, the fence on the property?
The, these pictures, I think, are, I think I took these pictures before he moved the fence, Joseph, you can answer that question better than I can. The fence, the, in other words, the power lines that you see here, the top picture, that is when, that is when the fence was located on the wrong side of the property line.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I, I mean, I don't think he provided any updated photos, photos either, but he did move it shortly after I contacted him, which was a couple months ago, he did move it to his property line, once he realized he was not, once he realized where his property line was, he did bring it to the proper side of the property line, but it still is taller than, than what our ordinance normally allows.
Yeah, so I brought it about.
Not accurate, because they're the old ones.
Well, right, I mean, this picture is still accurate, photos taken in September twenty, yeah, so this now, this is looking to the east. Highway Q is at the top of this, you know, at the end of the sidewalk, it's Highway Q, there's some utility boxes here. As he said, he's located in a, he used the word ditch, but you know, he sunk down below the intersection, there's a retaining wall here. He decided to put up some screening in the form of a fence from the headlights and the, to block the headline, headlights and the utility boxes, so that's one variance, and then the other is just the higher fence along the side lot line facing Highway Q.
And it's already constructed, we don't know how tall it is, but.
What's the height, Mr. Rollat?
So I have one, or I have two panels that are on it, on, I guess you would say, the backside, the alley side of the house, that measure just nine feet. But I've taken some panels down, and then, once the process continued, I stopped construction completely, so I mean, as of right now, it's.
You're halfway constructed right now.
Basically, yes, sir.
Okay.
And Mark, how are we measuring the height of a fence, is it, is it the material out of the ground that's being measured, or is it from the first floor of the house, or where?
From ground level, from ground level.
So where it comes out of the ground?
Correct.
So to have the proper picture, the floor of the house is down low, there's a retaining wall that kind of wraps around. The fence is on top of the retaining wall, and in front, the fence looks like it's maybe
four feet. Yeah, so, so because there's hanging walls here from the street, from the sidewalk, it doesn't, you know, you don't see the retaining wall, so from there, it looks like it's a height of four feet.
Right, so the fence he built is four feet high right there, and nine feet high in the back.
Correct.
Right.
So, say, Mark, so the issue is not at the retaining wall, right? The fence, if it's only four feet from the retaining wall, is that considered the grade?
Yes, so there's two issues, as the zone, as the variance notice indicated, the front yard, we allow a fence up to three feet in height, but it has to be at least fifty percent airspace. And he has it solid, and he has it one foot higher. In the street side, facing the side yard, facing Highway Q, which we consider a side yard, is six feet is, is the maximum height, which is just like any side yard. And there he has a higher fence, again, because the grade along Highway Q, we go back up to that photo. Highway Q is clearly, it's hard to tell from this photo, but, but the Highway Q goes up the slope here to the left, in the, this middle photo, it goes up to the left. So for all intents and purposes, from Highway Q, the fence height is probably, you know, I mean, if you, if it were, the, the fence is not six feet high at High, when viewed from Highway Q, it, it's lower and, and and because of the slope, because of the topography, so the fence, you know, so that's what he's trying to compensate for. I understand the request at the front lot line, because, you know, because it's sunk down, which is pretty unusual to have a, you know, corner situation like this, where you're dug into the corner, and cars are turning the corner here at Carnation Way, you know, obviously, the cars are up at a higher elevation when they are at, at the intersection, so.
And then another question, Mark, down the street, a couple blocks, there's, appears to be three or four homes that have solid fencing facing Q. And were those permitted, or were they, are they non-conforming?
Which way, Dave, south or north of this property?
It would be south.
South, yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll go there and show you what I mean, or what he means, it's Rolling Hill Drive, Marigold Circle. Let me show you this, do you see the map here? What he's referring to, and what the applicant's referring to, is when you go down Highway Q, this is looking north. So looking south, you see all these fences, that's the rear yard of, of the Shorecrest neighborhood. Oops, I just drove, I just went into the Shorecrest neighborhood, I didn't mean to do it, but you, you can see this here, there we go, so that's the rear yard of of properties that are on the Marigold Circle.
And those appear to be solid.
Those are solid, but that's because it's the rear yard, they're allowed to have a solid fence in the rear yard.
I see, okay.
Yeah, and so in this case, we have, I'll keep driving north now, so now we're going out of the city, past, you know, this is the old Orchids by the Acres property, and now here we are, this is July of twenty nineteen, so you're not gonna, you're not gonna see the applicant's residence, it's under construction, so this is the intersection with Cardinal, with Carnation Way. Here's Highway Q, and you can see that it drops down a little bit, it's, it's a little hard to tell, but, but it does drop down. And going back to his application, I'll go to the map here, so Highway Q is to the right here, it's not, not clearly shown on the map, but where it says subject site lot one, that's Highway Q. So so it's a different circumstance, it's not a rear yard, it's a side yard. Unlike Marigold Circle, the property sunk into the ground. Marigold Circle, the properties are, you know, more level with, with Highway Q, and I think that's the main reason why the circumstance is different.
Could you go back to the, the survey?
Okay.
Sorry, there you go, so, so the red dots are where you're hoping to put, put the fence up, and I understand the need for the, the fence on the north side and the east side and the southeast side, but what about the southwest side? What is the, yeah, that corner, what is the need for that?
That corner is a bedroom for our house and the house that we're next to. Keep in mind that there's only about maybe four and a half, five feet between the houses, maybe, maybe six. But there, it, it's right next to somebody else's window, so it's just having a fence there would give you some level of privacy, I guess, is the main reason. Plus, on that, you know, as many cars that come on to Carnation, to turn on to Carnation, we still see every single vehicle that leaves. And with nighttime being what, for forty-five, four fifty soon, you know, you, you see those cars all night. Living room is attached right in the front. So, you know, you can still see it, you know, every car that comes through. So again, it's, it's privacy and it's, and it's vehicles that, that keep coming by.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask a question, Paul?
Yes, absolutely, go ahead.
And so that's, you know, that's a good, good clarification, the, the fence has not been installed on the southwest corner, so I guess the question is, why wasn't it installed? If it was only, the focus was on the east side and on, you know, the southeast side, where the, you know, where the topography is so extreme, if you will. So.
I think there is a fence up there, I think, I, I drove past there this weekend, and I saw.
At the southeast corner there is, but there isn't at the southwest corner, so I'm just curious. I have not asked the applicant the question, because the question hadn't occurred to me until Justin asked the question. But why, you know, if the fence was in the east and southeast part of the lot line, but not in the southwest? So what's the difference there? And, and apparently that's a bedroom, is what I'm hearing.
That's a question to me, I assume.
Yeah.
Well, the, the plan the whole time, so I, when we signed for this house, we were, I mean, I'd have to dig up the emails, but even with our realtor, I, we were told that we could build a fence. It's the whole reason we bought the house, why else would I buy a house right next to the highway, I mean, that's insane. Especially if you can't have a, a fence, something to protect it, so I mean, the whole time, leading up to signing for this home, we, I was under the impression that I could build a fence, so when we bought the house, there was a, there was a timeframe in which we were going back and forth with Bill and Jenna, and they had gone back on what they said, saying that we could build a fence, and then we couldn't, here's the, here's the main thing. We live in an HOA, a homeowners association. When we signed, we were under the impression that we were going to have a association to deal with for any issues within the year of signing, maybe the next year, because they, they had a few more homes to buy, and then everything, you know, tanked, and they still have, Bills and Jenna still have three or four houses to build, and the association won't be developed until those four houses are built. And at this rate, it'll be before construction starts, probably another two years, and so we didn't think that we were going to have to wait. First off, I thought I was going to deal with my neighbors, I didn't think that I was going to be dealing with Bill and Jenna. If there isn't an association until all the homes are built in that little area, whether it's a year, two years, three years, it, there really is no HOA. So I, when I built the fence, I was only going to build this little thing, and I was going to call it a garden, because I was trying to get around the, the HOA, and then I finally just decided there, after many emails, there is no HOA, I don't even know my neighbors' names, I mean, I do know some of them, but that was after about a year of living here, so the HOA never really was formed. And so we were, it's false, we were under false pretenses, so when I built it, it was going to be just the highway side, and then I decided, you know what? We have more than one area that we need protection from, we have issues in different windows on different sides of the house. So I decided on that corner, I was just like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build it, there is some panels there, be, because I wanted, I, I had holes dug. And I wanted to give the bedroom some privacy, so there's some panels there, just to give it, just to get us, you know, through the timeframe, because we have no, you know, as you can see, there's trees out there, but it's going to take about a hundred years for those to grow. So I wanted to build the fence around the area that we needed the most protection, that we needed the most safety, and that we had the most problems with. And so it kind of, I always had a plan to do kind of an arch, for, because as you can see, there's no walkway. We have a hill, so on the grass, there's no walkway to our front door, so anybody can trip, so I need to put stairs, and I wanted to do a little arch, and then put something right on that corner for the cars that are leaving, and for the windows that are, are bare. And so it kind of went from, you know, this, you know, something that was going to be called a garden, that was kind of meshed with a privacy gate to a just a fence, once I realized that there really is no HOA, I, I was like, hey, well, there is no HOA. Really, I mean, the homeowner.
Can I jump in here a little bit here, because what, some of the stuff he's saying is not correct? And he's just babbling about other things, it has nothing to do with the fence.
Let me make sure that, you know, some of the questions that the board members may have directly for the applicant can be answered first, before we give other attendees an opportunity to speak, thanks for your patience.
Fair enough.
I did have one question, Joseph, could you explain the construction of the fence?
How, how do you, how do you support the posts?
So they're cement, so they're in the, they're four by four posts that are in in a pail that's been cemented and then painted, and then the hole was dug, because I had every, you know, I had them come out, the city come out marked. And I dug the holes, planted them in, meshed it with sand and rock. And, you know, the thing, the pole, the post, like, it's not going to stay that way, I, I'm, I'm, I was planning on building like, a brick thing around each pole to make it really look nice, I really wanted, this wasn't just like a a fluff piece, I really wanted to leave a statement, you know, because I grew up in this town, so, and then it's just panels.
So did you go, how, how deep are your concrete posts, are they?
Two feet.
Two feet, three feet?
Two to three feet. Two to three feet, depending on how tall the pole is.
Okay. All right.
So, you know, I could only go so deep when to do it by hand.
Before we give Bill an opportunity to speak, are there any other committee members that have questions for Mark or Joseph?
It's hard to tell from the pictures, the driveway comes off the alley on the back side, it looks like there's, okay, okay, so this is the back side. So it's flatter than I thought, the retaining wall is tall in the front and almost nonexistent in the back. The stone retaining wall. I, I, I think I'm getting the picture, so the retaining wall there is about three and a half, four feet tall. And then it doesn't exist in the back.
I would, I would say that's correct, yep.
And the fence in that picture right there, it, I moved it, so it actually matches up with my driveway, so it's, it's, it's a ninety-degree angle.
Yeah, no, that's true.
And it it's back on your property, and it extends all the way to the edge of your driveway pavement?
Yes, sir.
So there's a, a rear side fence, a side yard fence. A rear side fence, a side yard fence and a. Kind of an angled piece of front yard fence, and then the little piece in the corner hasn't been built yet.
Yep.
Yes, it's the, that fence on the alley side then goes uh, between the tree and the alley edge?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Yeah, the site plan here shows the approximate location of the fence currently. And that's what he's requesting for the variance. The photos are a bit dated. I just didn't go out and take new photos.
Yeah, okay.
And where? If the zoning code allows. A side yard and a rear yard fence in R one. At six feet high.
Right.
And it doesn't have an openness requirement. For those two.
It could be a solid fence and their side and rear yard, it could be solid, right?
So the only question really is. The taller height. And then the, on the front piece that's constructed, it's a foot too tall and it's. Not fifty percent open.
Yeah, too opaque.
Correct.
And so I guess one of my questions on the side and rear yard, since you're building the fence with the base of the fence. On the top of the masonry retaining wall. Um, wouldn't a six-foot tall fence work? Or do you have to go taller? Um, for the side and for the rear.
Well, no, it, um, it, no, because. You're in a ditch, because it goes down, you have to supplement that amount of feet, because it increases as it goes from. Uh, my, where my back area, back driveway is, you know, that yard area go, actually increases. As it goes to the retaining wall, so you have to supplement that. Um, and if you do a six-foot fence, it's basically like having a three-foot fence or in some areas less.
This should answer the question. Uh, Bob, see, there's some contours here.
Yeah, no, I I get that. I think he's trying to block headlamps from.
Right. Coming. But I would say there's a one, two, three, four, five, you know, five-foot drop roughly from the street to the property line. One, two, three, four, yeah, about five feet. So by ordinance mark on that carnation side, he'd be able to. Build a fence if he were to comply. It would, could only be three feet tall and fifty percent open, correct?
Correct, correct.
Yeah. And right now, as it stands, that fence is about four feet tall on top that retaining wall.
And it's solid. That's solid, right?
Do you have any questions for, like, Joseph or Bob?
I just, I have one for Mark. So if that retaining wall extended north along parallel at Q. Feasibly, you could continue this fence six feet high and it'd be, he would be uh, in compliance.
Well, the retain, right, I mean, the retaining wall, I'll go back down. The retaining wall, I think, is only at the corner. Because once you get up along the side of the house. Uh, I don't see, you know, I don't think there's much, I don't know when the retaining wall starts, but it's basically towards the front of the house.
Uh, but if that extended continually, continued to si- extend north.
You could have a six-foot-high retaining wall.
He could have a six-foot-high uh.
Well, that would be, that would be correct.
Okay. I think we should hear from the developer.
Yeah, it's just, if there's no other more questions, Justin or Dave, uh, Bill. Or whoever uh, is uh, for the homeowners association, if you could state your name and uh, you can proceed.
So before you go on to that, Paul, I do have one last question, because the fence is half constructed. If you go back to the survey. At, wh- where does the step happen from? Six feet to nine feet or? Where, where does the, where is the extent of the built fence right now?
That's a question for Joseph.
You would like to know, sir, where it's been constructed?
Yeah, if you start in the lower right-hand corner and start. Moving your mouth up, you know.
Um, so. The entire highway side is uh, constructed as well as. That little bit at the north end, uh, northeast end, um, that is in the back. Side of my house where the highway, you know, traffic comes into Middleton from Wanakee, going all the way down. Um, to the. Uh, northwest. Um. That entire area, that corner. So basically that U on the corner has all been constructed. And then there's just a few panels. On the uh, left-hand side that's next to that other house.
Oh, so it's already built at the nine-foot height?
Yes.
So it's nine feet from the southern lot line to the northern lot line is what, what he's asking.
Um. It's not nine feet all the way. It goes nine, eight, seven, and then it, as the uh, hill. Um. Increases, because I can't build it on the hill. Um. It's less. It it just e- it evens out the entire way across, from the front to the back. But it's nine feet in the back corner.
Okay, so above the retaining wall, it is a lower height and it gets taller as it goes to the back.
Correct.
Right, because the grade drops away, right?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, if there's uh, anybody else on the call that would like to speak, uh, please state your name and you can proceed.
Hi, uh, Bill Rangut. Um, I'm the developer of the property, the subdivision there. Um. First, I'd like to say that the, in our developers agreement, it required us to have deed restrictions. Recorded, and those deed restrictions were recorded and the city has a copy of them. The deed restrictions are in place, not for me, but for the homeowners. To keep their values up, to keep the, the development consistent. Um. Joe has been denied. At least three times about a fence. Yet he still built it on the county. We had to talk to the county. I had to spend five hundred dollars to get the property surveyed for somebody to pull the stakes up for the corners. Um, he has admitted that he's trying to get around the HOA. The HOA is in place, like I said, to protect the property values and to protect and have uniformity throughout the development. If you, um, he's complaining about traffic noise and speed. None of that has changed since he's purchased the, before he purchased the property. The. Homeowners Association was posted on the MLS. Um. If he didn't read it prior to that, it's not my fault. It's there, his. Real estate agent should have given it to him. Um. If you. When Mark had the uh, county queue up, you go south of this property, still in the town of Westport. But none of them have fences there, and they're the same. In the same situation as his house, where the road's up a little bit higher and it goes down a little bit. Um. And then if you go north to Northlake, nobody has fences along Q. And the reason for that is to protect the value and to keep properties consistent. You start putting fences in the front of the houses and you start looking, you know, a little. Lower-end properties and. People are spending five hundred thousand plus on these houses and we're trying to protect that. Um, what else do I have written here? Times. Yeah, I'd really like you to consider if um, he mentioned about building a, a retaining wall the whole way. That wouldn't, I would not oppose that, because that would, that would look much more professional. It would look a little more consistent. Uh, with a clean look. That fence doesn't have a clean look. Um, it's just quite. It's an eyesore. I was at dinner with people yesterday and we were talking about this meeting I had today, and everybody knew that fence, and everybody at the table said. I can't believe you let him build it. And I said, oh, hold on a second, I got into that with them. But you, but Mark, if you go on that picture you just had up on the screen, you go farther south. And those are the houses that are down, lower, and they don't have any fence. You know, so, um. I strongly encourage you guys to deny the fence. Um, if he gets this waiver, I'll have to take legal action against him through the homeowners association, because we do not want fences there. That's all I got. If any questions, I'm willing to answer.
Just so I'm clear, so you do have a developers agreement. And as you state in your letter, there is an article, uh, and there's the deed restriction on the property that is filed with the city, correct?
Correct. And I mean, the the deed restrictions are filed with the county, but the city has a copy of them that are attached to the developers agreement.
Okay.
And the city, we also, I mean, they. The city is the. Was a. Wanted the close density of the housing, rather than larger lots also.
Any of the board members have uh, any questions for Bill? I was simply gonna say, I know that the city encouraged density. I don't know that we have the deed restriction. I I'm not sure that we, well, we don't enforce neighborhood covenants, I'll say that. If there's a deed restriction, that's something we wouldn't enforce either. Um, I would simply, that's all I'll say.
Deed restrictions are the same as the covenants for the homeowners association.
Ri- right, exactly.
But in our, in our developers agreement, it says that. The um, homeowners association deed restrictions must be recorded. And they were, and then I sent a copy to the city.
Okay, are there other questions for Bill or Joseph or Mark?
I'm just wanting to make sure that I understand, because it seems. That this is an awkward circumstance. I'm not exactly sure how to phrase it, but um. There wouldn't need to be a variance if it was built according to the R one. Regulations, but if it was built according to the R one regulations, it's still in violation of the HOA. And it sounds like there's gonna be an action against the property owner because of that. Does that sound right?
That question is to me, yes.
So it seems like a slippery slope to approve something. That. Um.
I would.
It's got an inherent conflict in it.
Well.
I I would think of it like, it's the um, the homeowners association and the deed restrictions are kind of like out of our jurisdiction, right?
Right, right.
We can't.
Yeah, I get that. I get.
We can't, we can't judge on that, right? That's kind of a separate battle. I think that's, sounds like needs to be fought, but. We can just, we can just go off of what the zoning codes, the city of Middleton zoning code says. And see if, if we think there's a hardship there.
Can I say one last thing?
Certainly, go ahead.
On January twenty-third. Over a year ago, my mom died of pancreatic cancer. I was her so-called caretaker. And it ruined me as a person.
None of that's relevant.
I. Wanted specifically. To build a fence. Because I knew it would be. Therapy for me. Okay, that's what I had in my head before I even found this location for the house. I already knew that I wanted a fence before I signed. I confirmed that I could do it. We were, sold the house under false pretenses, that we could build a fence before, and then once they got our money, we couldn't. I would not have wanted to build this fence. It's not like I woke up one day, I just wanted to build a fence. My mom died, I wanted therapy. We were gonna buy a house because we sold hers. And the fence was one of the sole reasons that we bought this property, because it wasn't, it was a property that I could work on.
For that, uh, that input. Um, are there other questions, uh, directly regarding the defense in relation to the? Middleton ordinances? And the variants?
Well, Paul, my only concern is that, how do we grant a variance?
Are you still in the hearing process or not? Yeah, we're still in the hearing, Dave. If you have a question about that, we can hold that for when we close it. I'm about to close the public portion.
Okay, very good.
If there's any questions regarding uh, to Joseph or Bill, uh.
Is there, is there anyone else? I'm sorry, Paul, I can't see everybody. There's nobody else that wants to speak, is there?
Some of my neighbors have a problem with it. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. All right, uh, with that. And we did not receive any communications from the public other than uh, from the, uh, from Bill Ranker. Okay. So with that, uh, it's five forty-six, I'd like to close the public portion of this hearing and then uh. Give the board an opportunity to deliberate and discuss. So Dave, go ahead and ask you a question now.
Well, my only concern was, uh, do we have the right to discuss or act on a variance? If there's a uh, HOA in place that wo- won't allow those feds to be built in the first place?
In my view, they should be treated separately. We have our R one zoning standards that the city enforces. Um, you should be looking at this parcel, this, this request as um, like you do any R one subdivision. And our, our one zoned lot, I should say, and look at whether there's a hardship for why the variance should be granted. And anything beyond that, that's HOA-related or covenant-related is a private matter.
All right, very good.
I kind of see it the same way, Dave. You know, we, we make a ruling based on, you know, R one and then uh. Our, our one, the circumstances, you know, the topography, things like that, that are unique to the lot. What constitutes a hardship for the lot, and then where the chips fall after that is, is outside the city's perfect.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
So I guess a few thoughts, um, for the group. I, I have concerns with that. Piece of fence that is so, in the southwest corner. I, I don't find, if you can go back to the plot. That the southwest, there, um, that corner with.
Little L.
The little L, yeah, I think, um, I understand the rest of it in concept that he wants to block. The lights from the traffic, but that's just a, a, a privacy fence to. Block your neighbor's window. Um, that's any, anybody in the city of Middleton has that condition. I have that condition. If I opened up this window right now, there would be my neighbor's house ten, fifteen feet away, right? So I have a lot of concern with that. Um. I guess the other thought I have is the. Allowing a nine-foot-tall fence. Like, I think if, if we could rewrite it in a way to say that the fence does not go above. Um. Eight foot or nine foot from the floor line of the house, just so it, I, I know his intent is to keep it consistent height. And the fence will get larger so that the top stays consistent, but just to allow a nine-foot fence. Um, knowing that this could, you know, this property could potentially get sold, and then somebody could literally put up a nine-foot. Fence in the front corner, right, where it really, the intent is just to have it four feet or whatever it is to be consistent with the back. I don't know if there's a way to, to write. Um. Write it in so. So that makes sense. And then as far as the front of the house. So that makes sense. And then as far as the front of the house. Goes, I think you'd want to limit. Do is there a plan, a floor plan um of like where the front door is?
I think uh in that packet, Justin, there's a.
Yeah.
Like an aerial photo. Yeah, there you go.
Right, so. Like maybe limit it to the the corner of the house to be even with the edge of the porch. So you're not getting the lights turning directly into that. Window, but it's not covering the entire front. Of the house because now then it seems like it's not just a. A um barrier from the highway. It seems like it's a gated. Or, you know, fenced in entire house and I I don't think that would be a good look.
Um. I I do have it, um, not to interrupt, I do have it uh before the electrical box. So it's it's um. So it uh it's like right on the edge of the retaining. Yeah. Yep. So I don't know if you meant like on the corner, like all the way up to the sidewalk or not, or I was just confused.
Yeah, no, that like where it's built right now, I think I'm. Personally fine with. It's just when we're, if we allow a variance, I don't want it to go any further to the west.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. That makes sense.
And then you go back to that floor plan, Mark? Just so I'm clear. Right now that fence ends. About where the porch is, right? So Justin, you're saying pulling it back just to that corner?
I'm saying don't go any further than what it. What it is right now. It doesn't even look like it's go, maybe it's going just to the side of the house. I mean, that's how I'm reading that.
Right.
And that seems fair to me um. But extending any further into the front of the house, I I think that would be a mistake. And I don't know that at that point, you're you're really getting that that corner turn um from people turning much more. Um, so just. That that's a concern of mine, I guess.
It also is that window, sorry to interrupt again, um that window right there next to that gutter. Because you only have those two windows on the side there and then in the front, you only have those two windows in the in the bedroom. So that it wasn't just the in, it wasn't just the window on the side. It's also the window that was in the front. Sorry again.
Right, thank you. We're we're in a a a closed session discussing.
I'm sorry about that.
So I guess those are my couple thoughts. I don't know if anybody else. I mean, I I get the.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned with the height as it it falls, it draws away from the corner and it gets to that back property and it gets pretty high.
I tend to. Tend to agree with you.
I mean, I would be more inclined to, you know, grant a variance if the fence was, you know, it could be solid, but if it was at that three foot height. On the corner, you know, so granted, you have to take a foot off like that top board. Uh, to fall more in line with the R one standards. For Middleton. And then I think for me, then I could, you know. Uh, look past the fifty percent open.
I think, yeah, the fifty percent open is just for the front, correct?
Correct, yeah, I think so. Well, and then probably as he's going north along the house because he's trying to protect, you know, the house from the traffic and the noise.
But it's fine. That's that's a allowable. Fence.
Yes, on the side, correct. Yep, it's just that front on carnation way.
Sure. Anybody else have thoughts?
Well, I kind of agree with Paul. I I think if this was more at the three foot height, we might overlook the fact that it's. It's more solid than it should be. Due to the hardship of being to try to keep some of these headlamps from blinding them windows of the house.
Correct.
So I I thought I read and I might be wrong. Marco Pitts, is there a um? Is there something that says they can screen like like uh power boxes, electrical boxes with a? I don't remember. I should have highlighted it. Like an exception? Maybe I'm making that up.
I know, I know what you mean, Justin. I don't remember seeing anything.
Mark, do we have the actual ordinance in this packet? Because it would probably be there if if it was somewhere. Sorry, everyone, I should have. Highlighted this when I was reading through it, but. I might have just been making that up. If it's not part in here. Because to me, that's essentially what that front is doing, right? It's not really extended past. Those electrical boxes.
Right, that's kind of the way I see it. So for me personally, I guess uh, you know, I'd be okay, you know, granting the variance if that fence on carnation way worth three feet high. According to the R one zoning and, you know, I would allow the the opacity of that fence to remain.
I would just say it's not that uncommon to have utility boxes in a front yard. In this case, you know, this is a pretty significant box and it's elevated relative to the house, so I can see why. There's a desire to screen that, but moreover, I think that's not even what the applicant has said. He's talked about the the headlights and and that sort of thing. So. My two cents.
Any other discussion from uh board members? Thoughts, concerns, opinions?
Um. I'm just trying to gauge the height of. Of that corner. Are those? Sorry to, I should have asked this before. Uh, what are those boards? Are those two by eights or what?
Um, the, so the boards are one by one by eight.
One by eights, okay.
One by eighty foot and then I have done the front one by eight, six foot.
So it looks like we're six high. Okay.
So from that top view, we're about six feet above the street level.
No, it's it's six boards high. It's so it's it's hard to. You know, because there's gaps and everything, so it's hard to judge on how tall it is, but.
I'm counting nine boards.
Oh, did, okay. My eyes are, I mean, even you can see me, I'm like trying to get really close to my screen, but I uh. Nine boards in front. So I guess. I guess my recommendation would be something like. To. You but you pick a, we pick a height for the front, right? And we give a dimension from the sideline. Of how far that can go and say that that can be a certain height. And opaque. And then we say that 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 can continue around the house. That that top datum can continue around the house.
I would agree.
And that way it's a consistent look. The top height of the fence is at a consistent. Height as you go around or not to exceed, right? If he wants to step down from that as he gets in the back, that's fine, but it doesn't go any higher than that. Um, so I I was trying to judge how tall that that front corner. Should be or needs to be.
Not that I'm in favor of this fence at all, but why can't it step down?
No, I'm saying.
If I lose in court, if I lose in court with him. You're you're saying it's going to be nine feet at the end of the part, at the end of the fence down by his driveway. Why can't it step down six feet all the way? I mean, each step down fences look nice.
And.
You go two panels, drop it down a foot, two panels, drop it down a foot.
What I'm proposing, one prohibit that.
Yeah, but you're also saying he doesn't have to do it.
It's just a discussion. Sorry, it's a discussion that I'm trying to have with the rest of.
Right.
The board.
I think if we pick a consistent height, you know, I I think I'd be okay with that. Uh, whether the homeowner steps it down or not, that's entirely up to them.
I think what you're looking for is that the. There would be a a heist that would not exceed a certain footage. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So I think we need to start at that corner, right? That seems to be the critical dimension. So right now, Mark, uh, did you measure that fence from the top of that wall? He said it's four feet?
Um, I believe it was four feet, yes.
And then what I.
Go ahead.
Following you guys is that it's already built. Right? So what are you asking him to make it shorter?
I don't think I measured the fence height. I was going by what what the applicant wrote, I think, just so you know.
So I would imagine if if. We denied the variance instead it had to be six feet high. You're measuring it from the top of that. Masonry wall and it'd be six feet high. From that height all the way around. And somehow it's getting taller as it goes to the back so that it has a level. Top to it. If the boards are level, if the boards are not level, then it'd follow grade and be a six foot high fence all the way around.
And that's, I mean, it's less than six foot right now, right?
Well, it is there, but it's nine feet tall the way it's built.
Right, right, right. No, I I get, I get what you're what you're saying. And can you go back to the floor plan?
Well, you know, we could pick a height.
No, I I I think I think I do like where Bob's going though, because it seems like, well, depending on, I want to just see the floor plan. Because the garage is in the back, right? But there's also, okay, so that's on the west side, though. So there's stairs, a toilet room, the kitchen. Is this, is this floor plan accurate to your house?
Um. Yes.
Yes, okay, so a kitchen stair. Toilet room and is that a? Is that a back bedroom? Is that what that is? Or what is that? That last, um, sorry, the northeast corner.
Laundry room.
Laundry room. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So you're saying, Bob, that that fence would could step along that property line as it gets around to the backside so it doesn't exceed the.
The six foot.
The six foot.
Because it's not six foot at the corner as it is, or as as built, right? And if it steps back, there's not, I mean, those are pretty utilitarian rooms.
Right.
After you, after you get away from that corner. So then you're, I mean, to me, I don't know, I don't really see a, looking at the this a little further, I don't really see the hardship.
Well, that's kind of where I'm going is I think that. The six foot high fence built along the top of the. Stone retaining wall um is providing. The separation along the highway side. Um, and it may not be as tall as the applicant wants in the back um. But I don't know that I'd. Say that it's a hardship. I think that it can be a solid fence, six feet high from grade. Um, or the posts come out of the ground. Um. And I guess. I'm finding it hard to see a reason to grant the variance.
On the side, I I I can see, I I agree with you, at least on the side in the back, like. Looking at the floor plan and knowing what those rooms are.
If. If the precedent along highway queue, the other fences further down the road, they look like they're opaque fences, six feet high, they comply with the R one residential.
Right.
Environment.
I mean, I can see the need to to screen.
Circumstance here.
I I can see the need to to, you know, the desire to screen that corner. You know, where the living space is, but I'm having a hard time with that fence all the way around queue and then turning around the back and coming to the driveway again along the uh. The alley side.
It appears, it appears the last window on the east side before going north is that the kitchen.
Yeah, above the sink.
Right about there, yep.
No, there's not even a window back there, that hole.
No.
It's that the sink in the kitchen.
Living room in the kitchen or the dining room in the kitchen, whatever.
Yeah.
So I think too, if you had a six, I I'm with Bob. I think if. If you, the grade is high at the southeast corner, sloping downward toward the north. Uh, the six foot high fence appears like it would do what. The applicant's looking for anyway.
Yeah, that's how I see the side in the back, I think.
I see the crucial point is the southeast corner.
Right, yep.
I think if you're measuring a fence height. You're measuring it from the grade elevation where the post comes out of the ground.
Yeah, that's how, that's how they, it sounds like. How they measure it, so. That sounds right to me. And then so so that's that. How do you guys feel about the front?
Sure, we're saying, I I I kind of see what you're saying. I mean, definitely in R one, you can have a fence on the side, so that fence would need to comply with the six feet. And then as, you know, one strategy then is when you get to the corner, you need to maintain that height, which would then decrease the height of that fence at that southeast corner. Right? The flip side of that is keep that wall tall at the corner and then drop down somewhere along the side along queue to comply with the six feet.
Right, yeah, I think there's different ways of doing it, but I don't. He can get a six feet at that corner, which is more than he currently has right now and still being compliance.
Well, on the front, according to R one, the fence can only be three.
Not the R one, sorry, not the front, correct, yes, there.
The sides, he can be six.
Right.
And in the back. So that would have to, okay, so so the first point of our discussion is, you know, we're okay with the six feet on the side in the back. Now we just have to discuss what we want to do with that corner. Do we allow it to stay at the same height? Which is above the three feet.
Right. I would say yes, I guess. I think you'd want to keep it consistent with the rest of the fence. Um, I would, I would say not to not to exceed the height. Of the rest of the fence.
Can we scroll to the picture that shows the retaining wall? From the inside?
So.
Yeah, that. So is that the existing? Fence, that's the current picture, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, from bottom of the board, the, oh, it's kind of hard to tell. I think there's about four feet of actual fence, not including the post, you know, higher or higher below it.
So I I would be supportive of allowing that existing constructed condition to remain. As an opaque. as an opaque piece that kind of wraps the corner. I don't know how tall it is. And then along the highway queue side, you should transition to the compliance with the residential R one code with a six foot high solid fence.
Yeah, so I I would say I think just saying the same thing you did, Bob, but I'm not granting the side or rear variance. But allowing a six foot tall opaque fence on the south or on the front yard. But then we got to give a distance, I feel like, from.
But I don't want it to be like if that fence right now is four feet tall, I don't want it to be any taller than it is.
Right, so not to exceed.
Well, here, if I may, just to help you along, what I heard, what I heard Paul say, actually, Bob, I heard you say this. You said you'd support the existing structure in the front yard to remain, but the fence needs to transition to six feet along the side lot line and not increase six feet. That's what I heard you say.
Yeah, the existing, it looks like it's angled like on a.
Right. So so in other words, in other words, allowing what's in place here, and once you wrap around the side, it can go up to six feet, but it shouldn't go above six feet. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, exactly what I'm saying.
And that's pretty measurable and that. Yeah.
So can we base our decision off of a non non permitted fence? Or do we have to come up with a description that? You know, can can we say?
What we're saying is that the side and the rear have to be compliant with the R one residential.
Right, right, correct, yeah.
Including the posts.
Yes.
Including the posts.
Correct.
So we're.
So what you'd be doing, what you'd be doing in effect is to, let me go back to the hearing notice, one of you already said this. Let me zoom out a little bit here. You'd be saying you'd be granting the second one. The second bullet. To allow a fence up to, actually, it says up to five and a half feet is is what it said here. In other words, you'd be allowing the existing fence in the front yard. And recommend the homeowner association is separate, but that along the side and rear lot lines, it would have, you would not be allowing, you would not be granting this variance, that would be capped at six feet.
Correct.
I think that all makes sense. I think we just got to create a distance that that front. Um, well, fence is allowed. I don't want to allow it for the entire front yard, I guess, is what I'm saying.
If you go to the plan, I think we can pick a point that relates to the house, for example, the the corner of the kitchen, that southeast corner of the kitchen. Or I'm sorry, northeast corner of the kitchen or wherever the bump is, we can pick, we can pick a point.
That, I mean, the 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 ordinance, just pretend the house is here now, let's pretend the house is at the at the bottom of the cloud here, the cloud. You know, this cloud image, let's pretend that's the front of the house. What you're saying is this part could be taller and solid in the front yard, but once you reach the front plane of the house, it's got, it can't be higher than six feet. That's what that's what I'm hearing you say.
No, I'm I'm worried about that, how far the front goes.
How far west it goes.
How far west it goes.
Okay.
I think you just cap it and and say what you're approving is the existing built fence and no more.
Question, I think that's what we want. I agree with you, that's what we want, but can we? It's knowing that somebody else could build a new fence, right?
So it can't be, it can't be west of the of the east edge of the porch, I guess. Is that what you're saying? Or wherever it's built now.
Yeah, I I just don't know where it's built now, I guess, having a hard time. It kind of looks like even with the house, maybe. It doesn't look much further. To me, I don't know.
It it's hard to tell.
It is.
Well, I mean, it that it should not extend past where it is now or further than the retaining.
I can go out and measure that and come up with that just since I can, I can do that.
Yeah, I gotta say, Mark, you could probably come up with that, that's right.
Or I'd be fine, just no further than the edge of the house, I guess, would be, because I don't, I really don't think it's past that, so.
Well, you tell me what you want, it's your decision, it's not mine.
What do you guys think? Do we make?
You have another view mark where we can see that that Arbiviti is a is a landmark. It looks like that wall is kind of in line with that Arbiviti. I think you had another street view, yeah, okay, right there.
Yeah, the Arbiviti, I think, is a little little west of the wall of the.
Yeah, so it's kind of hard to tell. I'm trying to find where that Arbiviti is in relation to the house, but it's impossible to tell.
Yeah.
Uh, well, here's the utility boxes.
Yeah, we would have had the whole sound here.
Right, but the utility boxes are oh. The shadow of the of the Arbiviti, it's hard to tell here. The earlier photo, we thought the Arbiviti was to the west, and now it doesn't look like.
It looks like it's behind.
Yeah.
Mark, wouldn't would it make sense that if you would go out and measure where the fence exists today, so that doesn't change?
Yeah, I mean, that I can do that. That, I mean, that's, that's the way to do it, I think, is is if you're okay with, I mean, I think the fence and that, you know, obviously, the retaining wall was placed the way the way it was. Um, I assume that was done. I mean, I assume that was done when the house was constructed. You know, and anyway, so I, yeah, I can come up with that measurement.
If we make a motion, Mark, how do we incorporate that into the motion?
We can, could I just ask one question, please? Could could you ask him to have a engineer give us a light study from vehicles in a like a truck to see how high that fence actually has to be? Maybe it only has to be three feet high in the front instead of what it is. Maybe it has to be two feet high, but let's have a study done on it, tableless.
Maybe it has to be taller.
That's true, too. You're right, Joe.
Okay.
Well, I I do want to encourage some peace here if we can for you, both you, Bill, and for the applicant. I know this has been a struggle for you guys for the past year. And I'm hoping that whatever comes out of this meeting is a compromise and that people can move on with their lives.
I would love to.
Yeah, and and I mean, I'm saying that to both of you. We we don't.
And I'll take him to court, so we got.
Bill, come, okay, guys, that's.
Well, let's go back to the discussion. So I think the motion we have on, well, not motion, but the the way I'm understanding the discussion is that we're inclined to improve, approve the variance for that fence at the corner. But as you drop down along Highway Q into the back, the fence needs to comply with the R one, that's six feet.
Right.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, so I think I think what you do is you go by what the hearing notice said, which is you approve a fence no higher than, where was that now? No offense. You know, no higher than five and a half feet in the front yard. I basically keeping it the way it is. I think you need to put that in your motion is to say uh, keep the fence the way it is, without any extension to the west nor any increase in height. No extension to the west or any increase in height for the purpose of screening from vehicle headlights, I think was your heart.
So say, Mark, if you're going to go out there and measure the length of it, just so we have it on record, would you also measure the height then?
Of course.
Yeah.
And I would also say is the hardship, the then elevation of the lot compared to the surrounding roads. And I would also add that deny the request for a fence taller or more opaque than what is permitted on the southwest corner of the lot. So that was that L that we were talking about on the on the southwest corner.
Right, just so I'm clear, then along queue and in the backyard, that fence would need to drop down to six feet.
Yeah, so what Justin is saying, and that's a, it's a valid point, is he's saying the red dots here, that would have to be subject to city ordinance, which is fifty percent airspace, not higher than three feet. If, you know, if if there is a fence to be installed, it has to comply with the ordinance is what he's saying. This part here, this this reverse L on the right on the southeast corner can be as as listed in the hearing notice, and then anything in the side and rear lot line is capped at six feet, so you're denying that variance request.
Correct.
Yes. So if that's the case, do one of the board members want to make a motion?
I thought that was his motion.
Okay.
It was kind of piecemeal, but.
No, I get it.
Can you read it? Can you read back what my motion was to me, Mark?
Just a second. So the motion is to grant the variance pertaining to fence height and opacity in the front yard contingent on no extension of the fence to the west nor any increase in height. No. And with no approval of variances for the southwest corner and the fence height along the side and rear lot line. The rationale the rationale is to screen to provide screening from vehicle headlights, the sunken elevation compared to surrounding roads, maybe I would say that first, actually. And yeah, that's the rationale.
Uh, one thing, do we need to indicate a a point along Highway Q where that fence needs to drop down to six feet?
And if so, I. At the, once it goes past the front, okay, so with no with no variance itself, it's one of the fence height alongside real outlines, that that's implied in that. I'll I'll just say no variances for the southeast corner and the fence height along the side and rear lot lines, meaning a maximum height beyond the front facade of six feet. I'll just say that.
Okay.
The rationale is due to sunken elevation. The lots sunken elevation compared to surrounding roads. So as to provide screening from vehicle headlight from so as so as to provide screening from headlights of turning vehicles. A vehicle's turning into carnation lane. Is that what you meant?
Yep, that's my motion.
Very eloquently stated, Justin.
So eloquent.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, Schultz, was that?
Oh, Bob.
All right.
I got that, Mark, then all in favor? Yes.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the variance is approved as stated in the motion.
Right.
Wait, with that, I'd like to close that deliberation at five twenty, at six twenty four. If there's no other agenda items, would someone like to make a motion to dismiss?
I move to adjourn.
Dave's second. Justin, all of.
Yeah, second, second.
Justin, hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.